This regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. Really want to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to the reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make a policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. If you would please make sure that your phone is on silent. And we really appreciate the time that you have taken to join us and for your interest in Waco Independent School District. Este junta regular de Waco ISD está convocada. Les extiendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presente y los que nos observan por televisión. También les quiero compartir que todos los conferencias está disponible en la página de Waco ISD, Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En ese página pueden escoger su idioma, así toda la información que fue descultida está disponible para todos. Por favor, apájar su teléfono celular, les agradecimos el tiempo que compartid con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. As the Board of Trustees, we are to follow a code of ethics. We are, as the Board of Trustees, we are, this code of ethics says there is an honor in conduct. In that conduct are one of our things is we will always tell the truth. We will share our views while working for consensus. We, as the Waco ISD Board, will respect the majority decision as the decision of the Board. And we, as the Waco ISD Board, will base our decisions on fact rather than supposition, opinion, or public favor. Thank you. Moving on to item number two. Anybody signed up? No public comments? Okay, moving on. We will move on to item number three, moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. Let's go and take a moment of silence for prayer, contemplation, reflection, and/or meditation. Thank you. Our pledge leaders.
Our pledge leaders this evening are Carson Carey and Christian Aguilar of Tennyson Middle School.
(audience clapping)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. The Board would meet me in front of the dais.
We now like to introduce our pledge leaders. Please welcome Carson Carey. Carson is in the 7th grade at Tennyson Middle School and plays football, sings in the choir, is active in student council, and is the 7th grade class president. His favorite subject is English, and he enjoys gaming and singing. When he grows up, he would like to play in the NFL and then be a middle school coach, we hope, right back here at Tennyson. Ladies and gentlemen, Carson Carey. Our next pledge leader is Christian Aguilar. Christian is in the 8th grade at Tennyson Middle School, where he serves as the student council president. His favorite subject is English, and he enjoys music. Christian plays the trumpet in the school band. When he grows up, he would like to be a musician. You might recognize this young man because he was our student speaker at dedication of the new school. So, Christian Aguilar. And I ask him to be my intern next semester.[306.72][306.72](laughter) And I believe Mr. Bradford McMillan is here with us this evening. Mr. McMillan, if you'll stand, he serves as the Tennyson Middle School principal. So, thank you Texans for an amazing job. We are now ready to move on to fine arts. With the Texas Thespian Festival, both Waco High School and University High School students competed at the state level in Corpus Christi with several students advancing to the national contest in July 2025. Eighteen Waco High students competed in the state contest, with seventeen of the eighteen advancing to the national competition. They had a rating of excellent or higher. From Waco High School, we welcome and congratulate Rossi Sharp. Rashi is a national qualifier with a superior rating in duet acting for Rosencrantz and Guildenstern or Dead by Tom Stoppard. He also competed in the Team Tech Challenge. Rashi Sharp. Eleanor Rhodes is also a national qualifier, receiving a superior rating for her monologue for Sweet and Twenty by Floyd Dell and Artagon Now by Melissa Cooper. She also competed in the Tech Team Challenge. Eleanor Rhodes. Isley Lawson is also a national qualifier with a superior rating in costume design for Hades Town by Anias Mitchell. Ladies and gentlemen, Isley Lawson. Joshua Nelson is a national qualifier, receiving an excellent rating for stage management of the play Ruthless that was held earlier this semester. It's by Joel Paley and Marvin Laird. He also competed in the Tech Team Challenge. Ladies and gentlemen, Joshua Nelson. Brooks Bronstein. Bronstein. Brooks is a national qualifier, receiving an excellent rating in duet acting for Dirt by Mandy Connor. Congratulations, Brooks. And now Katerina Telip, national qualifier. Excellent rating in group acting for The Revolutionists by Lauren Gunderson. Congratulations, Katerina Telip. And also competing at the state level was Andrew Gonzalez. Andrew represented Waco High School in the Tech Team Challenge. Congratulations, Andrew. We had several students who were not able to be with us tonight, but also advanced to the national competition. You can see their names up on your screen, but we'd like to recognize Lily Howell, Elena Agasson, Karis Henderson, Lydia Allen, Angela Woods, Addison Roark, Descharme Bell, Sarah Townsend, Claire Prather, Mary Goodsham, and Riley Figley. We also want to share that Waco High School Thespian Troop 2542 was also recognized as a gold honor troupe, based on community service and advocacy work completed in the 2023-24 school year. Theater teachers from Waco High School are Liz Vermeulen, receiving the certificate now, and Edward Wise. And congratulations to all of our Waco High Thespians. And we'll do a group shot. If we could invite Associate Principal Dekeisha Alberti forward to join us for the photo. And I'm hearing through the grapevine that it is now Dekeisha Harris.[627.12][627.12](laughter) Congratulations to you. A round of applause for our Waco High Thespians. And now, University High School had twenty-five students compete at the Texas Thespian Festival, with five of them advancing to the national contest this July. From University High School, we congratulate Derek Thomas. Derek is a national qualifier with a superior rating, and listen to this, a perfect score in duet acting for Top Dog Underdog. Congratulations, Derek Thomas. I understand from the theater arts teacher that that is the first time in history that University High has gotten a perfect score. It's virtually unheard of, so quite an accomplishment. We now like to recognize Oliver Houston. Oliver received an excellent rating in solo musical and an excellent rating in team costume design challenge. Congratulations to Oliver Houston. We now recognize Natalie Rodriguez. Natalie received an excellent rating in hair and makeup design for Little Shop of Horrors and excellent rating in team hair and makeup design challenge. Congratulations, Natalie Rodriguez. We now congratulate Rochelle Villa. Rochelle received a rating of good in group acting. Congratulations, Rochelle. We now recognize Jordan Ward of University High School. Jordan also received a rating of good in group acting. Congratulations, Jordan. Not able to attend this evening, but also capturing awards at the state festival are Ayana Flores, Akina Casell, Daisy Barco, Avion Anderson, Noah Martinez, Talia Johnson, Jeremiah Martinez, Ruby Hernandez, Lila Moore, Samantha Romo-Masius, Dion Martinez, Kaylee DeLeon, Colton Owens, Cameron Obrey, Alexis Rios, Fernando Pateo-Pedra, Sarah Collins, Adriana Hamilton, Cherish Duffy, and Naomi Williams. And teachers Catherine Davis and Savannah Jones lead the University High School's Theater Arts Program. And I believe Ms. Davis is actually still at the state festival because she serves on the state board, so she is executing her duties. Texas is so large that they actually break it up over two weeks to try to get through all of the competitors. So, that's where they are tonight. We'd like to bring all of our students back for a group photo, and we would like to have our principal, Dr. Kenesha Johnson, join us for the group picture, please. And congratulations to all of our University High School Thespians. And the accolades for fine arts continue. Waco ISD is one of only sixteen districts from among more than twelve hundred in the state of Texas that has earned the Texas Art Education Association District of Distinction Award every year since the award's inception six years ago, placing the district's visual arts program in the top 1.3% of all visual arts programming in the state of Texas. That deserves a standing ovation. We would like to recognize Waco ISD Fine Arts Director Larry Carpenter and congratulate him and all of the campus art teachers for earning this incredible honor for Waco ISD. Mr. Carpenter and I were talking earlier that we're going to need a display case, so, on his floor. So, congratulations to Mr. Carpenter and all of our Waco ISD fine arts teachers. Job well done. We would now like to honor our Community Partner of the Month. Please welcome Waco Family Medicine as the November Waco ISD Outstanding Partner. Waco Family Medicine has been a longstanding partner with Waco ISD. Currently, its mobile dental clinic is providing dental screenings on our elementary campuses during the school day. Waco Family Medicine has provided telehealth services, allowing students to see a healthcare provider, receive a diagnosis, and even have a prescription sent to the pharmacy. So, when the student's guardian picks them up from school, their medication is already ready. They provide basic diagnostic tests and over-the-counter medications, eliminating the need for students to be sent home for complaints that can easily be remedied while allowing guardians to remain at work. Thank you to Waco Family Medicine for your tremendous partnership with Waco ISD. Thank you, Waco Family Medicine. And trustees, that's all we have this evening. Thank you.
Just kidding. Okay, always fun to recognize our wonderful achievements within our district and our community partners. Okay, moving on to item number five, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Spicer.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Attendance Boundaries Committees, we had our first meeting on November 12th. Many of you joined parents, staff, and community members from across our district as we convened our Attendance Boundary Committee for our first meeting. The meeting reviewed the 2021 Long-Term Facilities Plan and recent demographic update provided to the Board ahead of committee members discussing in small groups and then presenting on what they believe is important for consideration in this process. The conversation was rich, and I'm grateful to all who attended and engaged in this process. In addition, the following day, we rolled out our first Thought Exchange. It's an online survey to all parents, staff, and community members, inviting them to join the conversation. That survey closes tomorrow, and I look forward to sharing and reviewing those insights with you all and our committee. At this time, I do want to give each of you a chance to share your thoughts on the meeting. Some of you did attend, and you have the opportunity to listen. Does anybody have anything they want to share regarding the first attendance meeting?
I'll say, I'm so thankful that people, I know right now is really busy time of the year, and I'm so glad that people have made time in their schedule to be a part. We've got a really robust group of people, a good cross-section of people, from parents to teachers to administrators. So, I am really looking forward to seeing what they come up with.
Absolutely.
I'll say also that it was a large crowd and a very diverse crowd, which we always are appreciative of. And I thought that there was good dialogue, and there was an openness that I thought was helpful.
Yes, sir.
I was just going to back up what Jim said. I wish there was a photo that showed how full this room was with people. There was a lot of conversation, a lot of voices, and it was great to see.
Well, thank you all for attending, those of you who could. Our next meeting is Thursday, December 5th, and we'll take the time to follow back up with written feedback from the committee, as well as feedback from the Thought Exchange to launch our next set of discussions on our elementary, our middle, and our high school attendance boundaries. We do hope to start sharing and looking at some draft maps and get feedback from the committee at that time. Next, we also had EOAC Brassist Early Head Start ribbon cutting. Tuesday, I had the opportunity to stand alongside Vice President Vedanya and some wonderful community partners as we cut the ribbon on the new EOAC Brassist Early Head Start Center. It is truly humbling to see the program and the resource that the Board, Dr. Kincaid Cannon, and so many of our dedicated staff have worked tirelessly to plan and prepare for them to come to life this fall. We're still currently enrolling our Waco ISD connected families, and space still is available at the EOAC Brassist Early Head Start. Thank you to the EOAC for its partnership in this project and Waco ISD Board of Trustees for supporting this vision to further expand how we are meeting the needs of students and families in our community. Kendrick Elementary Construction Day, that was a blast. Another highlight I want to share was learning and celebrating alongside our scholars from Kendrick Elementary as they enjoyed Construction Day. Held at their current temporary campus location, all students and staff were able to rotate through stations where team members from Built Right Construction, O'Connell Robertson, and our own facilities and maintenance staff showcased their new school, sharing more information about the phases of construction and even providing heavy equipment demonstrations. I heard that our 4th grade asked great questions about total cost and how we secure the taxpayers' investments through the bond election process, and that was cute because they were like, "So, did my mama pay a million dollars for that?"[1373.64][1373.64](laughter) So, great conversation from our littles. And we also had our pre-coach students, and they safely climbed on the heavy equipment in a special right-sized safety vest and hard hats provided by Built Right. It was a truly special time. I'm thankful to Principal Azana and her team, along with our construction partners, for how they worked together to provide these engaging learning experiences for our students. What a great way to build understanding and further excitement for our new Kendrick Elementary. And this is something new for us. I'm going to be introducing one of our newest principals. For me, it's important to make sure we introduce to the Board people who are coming into leadership roles in our district. So, at this time, at the start of this month, rather, I was proud to announce that Dr. Kishana Johnson was selected to serve as the next leader of University High School. Dr. Johnson, whose first day as principal was November 11th, has more than sixteen years of experience as a school administrator and has been serving the Trojan family on campus as an assistant principal. Johnson is a graduate of Tarleton State University with her doctoral degree in educational leadership. She graduated from Texas State University with her master's degree in professional counseling and the University of Texas with her bachelor's degree in psychology. Prior to joining the staff of University Trojans, Johnson was the Associate Principal of J. H. Hines Elementary, following her role as Assistant Principal at Midway Middle School. She also worked twelve years as a school counselor, is certified as an avid administrator, has her superintendent certification, and has distinguished herself in Region 12 as a thought leader and presenter for many of our student support initiatives. Dr. Johnson is here with us tonight, and I invite her to come speak to the Board and say a few words, introduce her family and guests that she might have brought with her. Please welcome her, she comes.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening to you, Board. I am truly honored to be able to be here, to be presented to you, to be selected, to serve such a wonderful community like University High School and our Waco ISD students. I came to University High School just briefly moments ago in March, it feels like, in a blink of an eye, and fell in love, to be honest with you. I already knew I had a love for the Waco ISD students, but University High School is just, it's amazing. It's absolutely amazing. And I love our students and our staff there and the things that we are doing together, even with just this short change of leadership to embed into our staff and in our students that they can do everything. They don't have to reach the level of the bar someone else sets. I want our students to know they set the bar, that they are the ones that deem the excellence, they know how to have grit, they know how to persevere, and that is my goal, is to just continue the traditions, the honor, the passion, the heart, and just tie it up in a beautiful bow that we call a Trojan, and make sure that students understand that they can do absolutely everything. I have brought guests with me, and I will introduce them, but my love for university just kind of overflows in the moment. But I have my husband here, and I have my daughter Diana, my son Daniel, and my son Quincy. I am a mom of three. And I have my parents here, Maurice Walker and Gloria Walker, who are also former educators. And my dad is a former educator of Waco ISD, so you know, traditions run hard, right? And so, when we know where greatness is, we come and we do. And so, I love the school. Thank you so much for this honor, and I look forward to continuing to serve this community and our students in every way I can possibly do, in every capacity to excellence at every moment for as long as I can.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Well, Dr. Johnson, welcome, even though I don't feel like you've been there, so it's kind of hard to say welcome when you already have been there. But I know you're a father and a very well-respected and loved educator, so I can only assume it runs in the family. So, welcome, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to item number six, information items and report. Mr. Grant, is there anything you would like to discuss?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Mr. Gillory?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
And Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay. Moving on to consent agenda, I don't think I've heard anyone who wants anything pulled. Mr. Grant, is there anything you would like pulled? Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Mr. Gillory?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, hearing that, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Grant. Any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Gillory?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
Nope.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Moving on to item number eight, report of longitude reading data from 2020 to 2024. Dr. Cornblum.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Can we congratulate her and shake her?
Yes, we'll take a moment and shake her hand while you're coming to the podium. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cornblum, for being patient. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
Okay, here we go, some good reading data.
All right, here we go. So, good evening, Madam President, Dr. Spicer, and trustee members. So, we kind of have two presentations for you tonight. The first part of the presentation will be, let's just click to it so that you can see. So, it's second and third-
So it's 2nd and 3rd grade data. So when we look at the 2nd grade slide, what you're seeing here on the left, the Renaissance data, so from 2324, those are the 2nd graders in 2324. And 2223, those are 2nd graders. So it's, it's not tracking them from 2nd to 3rd. Those are all 2nd grade students. And then the I-ready there, because we switched our assessment this year to be better aligned with our interventions, because I-ready developed a diagnostic assessment that provides pathways, learning pathways for students, and that was more appropriate so that we weren't double-testing students. So that is this year's I-ready data reflecting that assessment because we've moved away from Renaissance. I want to say a couple of things about the 2nd grade class that you'll see. So the 202223 students, every time we come to a 2nd grade slide, those students would have received asynchronous instruction in kindergarten. So that's how, just kind of still tracking that and those effects. That 2020-
Due to COVID. Right.
COVID, yes, due to COVID, correct. And then the 2023 and 2024 students would have received instruction on all regular setting. So we were, they were back to a normal school year. And then I'll talk about 3rd grade once we get to 3rd grade. So what you're seeing here, I'll explain this slide more in depth, and then as we go along, I'll let you look over the slides and then just notate highlights if there are any kind of things that stand out. So when we look at this slide, you see that in 202324, in 2nd grade, the students finished the year at a 2.19. So they started at a 1 point, is that 5.2? I need glasses. 1.52. So they, they grew, but they were still at the beginning of their 2nd grade year. Interestingly, in the 202223 with that students, they finished in the same exact place, and those students are the students who received the asynchronous kindergarten instruction. So that's kind of a, you would, you would have expected them to possibly, to have been affected more negatively by that. So the I-ready scores are different. You see there, remember those are 2nd grade students, and you see there on that bar that it says 1st grade, and it shows that those students in 1st grade, is that, what number is that? 488, 4? Yeah. So, so when you look at that, down below it says 1st grade, but that grade band right there, 1st grade ends at 488. So that is a very large grade band, but that is ending 1st grade. So considering they're going into 2nd grade, they're right on target. So every time when we come to a 2nd grade slide, that 419 to 488, 488, remember, is end of 1st grade. Interestingly, you're going to see that a lot, and they kind of have all ended up at the same place for the most part there, so end of 1st grade headed into 2nd. Okay, when we look-
In the I-ready that we're looking at, that's BOY, beginning of the year.
Correct.
Second grade.
That's our first data point. This is the first year we've had it.
September, something like that.
Yes, end of August, yeah. And then when you, the MOY data will be available after January 17th. So that MOY window is January 7th through the 17th, so that will have a second data point at that time. So now, when we're looking at the 3rd grade slide, the same thing. All of these are 3rd grade students in their particular year. So for these guys, in the 202223 school year, these guys experienced a kindergarten that closed. So that's the year in 1920, these, these students would have been in kindergarten. So the students in 2223, and then they would have received asynchronous instruction in 1st grade during the 2021 school year. The 2324s, they received asynchronous kindergarten, and then once they hit 1st grade and on to 2nd, they had a regular setting for their instruction. And then our, yeah, so that's it. So really, that 2223 class and the 2324s were affected a little bit by that. So as you see in 3rd grade, they're, in 2324, they finished at the beginning of 3rd grade, and this is 3rd grade. So you would have wanted to have seen that. Renaissance measures in months or years and months. So you would have wanted to have seen something more along the lines of 3.8, 3.9, something, 3.02. That, that represents a beginning of 3rd grade score. When we go over to the I-ready data, that band is pretty large. So you see 474 to 510. So when we look at that, what is that, 4 what? Thank you, 488. So they're about mid 2nd grade and 3rd grade there. So that's a large band, so they're not to 510 to be at the end of 2nd grade, but they're about mid 2nd grade at the beginning of their 3rd grade year.
Isn't that the same score as the 2nd grade?
Yes.
Okay.
There it is. Yes and no, we'll go back.
Close.
Yes, when we, at the end of your presentation, if you want to investigate this further, you have a table that looks like this, and that shows all of the grade bands, and there, there is overlap on some of the bands between where one ends and one begins. Okay, so that's Bell's Hill. So when we go to Cedar Ridge, one of the things that I wanted to point out for them, if you look at the I-ready data for this year, they are, it's, so 1st grade is 419 to 488. They are, they are right there at end of 1st grade, so they're right where they should be headed into 2nd grade. So when you consider that in, in looking at some of our other students where they ended, we are at the beginning of the year right now where the class of 202324 was at the end. Is that right? Do you see that, like, okay? So that's good, that shows improvement, because this is a BOY score as compared to their EOI score for the students last year. So from here on out, I'm going to let you kind of look at the data. If there are things that stick out, I'll point, but give you a moment to look at it. And if you have questions, then you can ask me questions about what you see on the slide. So again, these guys are at 488, and we talked about this today, how they all ended up at about 488 on that I-ready assessment data. So that's mid 2nd this year headed into 3rd. But when you look at the 2nd grade data, they're closer to the end of 1st, right where they need to be headed into 2nd in most instances. They take a little drop between 2nd to 3rd in that BOY score.
It's my understanding that y'all rerun these scores because they all look similar, 487, 488.
Right.
So y'all rerun those, right?
Yes, Jessica Steele, who is our new data analyst, she, when the data was coming up, she was like, "This can't be." And so she went back and reran the data just to check it again to see, is this really, and it, and it is. It is really where they're coming out. So 2nd grade is showing strong in terms of this year heading in, and it's about the same for every 3rd grade class. Would you like for me to click through? There are some really great high points as we come to some of the other campuses. Do you want me to spend time on each slide, give you a moment to look at them, or go ahead and skip to the really strong points?
Show, yeah, show us some of the stronger ones.
Okay, all right.
We've looked through the data.
Good.
Let's go ahead and hit it.
Just go ahead, got it. All right, so when you're looking at Hillcrest again this year, in the 2nd grade, they finished about the same. When you're looking at 2324, they finish just midway of that 2nd grade year. But when we look at 3rd grade, look how high the 23s, 24s finished at the end of 3rd grade and where they are right now at the beginning of this year. So that's a really high, bright spot for this campus. And then when I go on down, let's get down quite a bit. So I wanted to highlight West Avenue because West Avenue is showing some pretty good growth. So when we look at the 202324s, they finished almost near end of 2nd grade headed into 3rd. So just right on the verge of being there. And then when we look at our I-ready, the, the students at that 488, just like everyone else, they're right at the end of that 1st grade. But the jumps that they're taking from BOY to EOI, especially with that 2324 class, that's a pretty large jump, and so we're proud of them for that. And when we look at the 3rd grade students, and you look at that score, it's a 487, I believe, is that what this is? 487. And so when you look at your grade band, that is 2nd grade, but mid 2nd grades. So they're, they're just a little behind headed into 3rd, but not, for a BOY score, that's pretty much in line. But if you look at the growth that they're making, they have good growth. These guys here, our Alta Vista Brook Avenue and J. H. Hines, they were not with us, and so they took the MAP score, or the MAP test, rather, in their, you know, their previous years, and we don't, I don't have that data. So all that we have for them are the BOY scores for their. Okay.
I have a question. They didn't share with us this data from the MAP testing in previous years, the zone, did it?
I don't have it, so not to my knowledge.
We're not going to request it. We don't, I'm just wondering, would it be useful to help the students?
See where they were and where they're coming in, for sure. And I'm sure that they track their data, you know, that they have it.
If we can make a request, even if that means, you know, our board needs to reach out to their board.
Yeah, and that, you know, that I know that as, as a part of that contract, they had to track the data on their, their growth. So I'm going to go through, and there's that chart for you. This, before I get into the longitudinal data, this is something that we're, we're really proud of. And let me explain what you're seeing here. So we recently had a data meeting with I-ready to show, kind of go over our BOY data as well as our summer data. And I'm sure you all have heard about the summer slide. So in the summer, a lot of students dip back a little and start at the beginning of the year, you know, a few months behind where they started. What this is showing is that where our students started, they had less summer slide than students across the nation. Not just students across Texas, but students across the nation. So you see where it says plus 8, well, you can see the graph over on the, on the side, where it says prior year growth, and then up or down, and then down below it says national. So in that first column in 1st grade, the national average is none, and ours, we were at a plus 8. So you can see the pluses there. So something we did different this year, I'm not ready to say that it's why we didn't see the summer slide, because it's been one year. So I think we, we need to do it more than once, right, to know if that's really the reason. But we had regular summer school this year, and then we had a jumpstart summer school. So a little before summer, or school started, we had a jumpstart for certain students. So did that help? I hope so, but we, we need to test that theory to know if it really did.
Do we know, do, do you roundly know the number of students that attended the jumpstart?
I will call on my good friend Carmen Logan to help me with that answer.
The number of students who attended Jump Start, around about. She has her computer with her.
And the Jump Start was only for elementary?
Yes.
I have a question, Dr.-
Who had a question? I'm sorry, who had a question?
Sorry, I had a question. We, I recall at some point approving money for summer enrichment for students in Waco ISD.
That was with Esser Funding.
Esser Funding, what year was that?
So last year was our last year of summer enrichment, but it was much less. That first year, we employed a person, if you remember Mr. Tenney, who kind of coordinated those activities, and it was a full summer of activities. Last year, a little bit less, because there was a set amount that was given through Esser for that.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So Jump Start, the, getting back to my question, and I know Ms. Logan is over there trying to find that data, but we only offered the Jump Start to Kinder and First? Right. So then how, what do you think possibly showed the growth for 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade?
Well, we had a few things going on, so, well, not a few, a couple. We had normal summer school, right, the regular summer school. We had reading programs at some of our feeding sites, Camp Read-a-Lot. So we had opportunities such as that over the summer. So I don't know specifically, this is the first time we've seen data, this data, or data given to us like this, probably because it's the first year we've done I-ready like this. So I think we need to see another summer of this kind of gain to know for sure if those things are, you know, really paying off. But those are some of the things that we did.
Just one last thing, and I will say this is my last thing, but maybe not. You know how I am. Looking, going back and looking at, at the, the band scores, and, you know, I pull up Transformation Waco.
Make it back.
Looking at 3rd grade, they're all 488, and all the scores for their I-ready were 487, 488. And statistically, that just can't happen. And I know that you guys have rerun the scores. Do we have, do you have, just curriculum and instruction, have strong confidence in this diagnostic test?
I do. So first off, it's a norm reference test. So that, you know, you're running it against scores and students across the state to, to create these bands. But also, I-ready is on the commissioner's approved list of tests that, that can be used for diagnostic assessments and screeners and such. So yes.
I didn't ask this earlier, and I'm sorry, I beat Angelo. What is the, do you know the standard error of measurement?
I do not know the standard error of measurement, but I'm sure that we could reach out to I-ready and get that for you.
Or possibly-
I'm not sure Ms. Parnell would know that off the top of her head, though.
Each grade has a different standard measurement, error measurement? Is it, but I guess if it's normed, then Courtney, if it's normed, then it's within the acceptable band of SEMs? Otherwise, it wouldn't, it wouldn't come out normed correctly.
We can definitely get that. Ms. Logan has the Jump Start numbers.
So math is not my strong point, so I didn't add them all up. But what we did is we took from kindergarten, and we took a total percentage of students by, we tiered our campuses, so our failing campuses, where they were allowed to invite 20% of their students. If you were a Tier 2 campus based on data, you invited 15%, or 18%. And then all of our Tier 1 campuses have 15% of their students in kindergarten and 1st grade. So for example, 350, 324, and 322. So that would be Tier 32. That would be kindergarten. That was-
That's a thousand.
-kindergarten students, so approximately 1,000, and that is the same for 1st grade, total.
So how do we pay for this? Did, pay it out of Courtney's?
Title.
Title one?
And so you also mentioned about the second, this was for kindergarten, 1st grade. That was 2nd through 5th grade had regular summer school that we had in, in June.
But we didn't employ any other extra things, looking at, you know, the, the summer slide, other than, we didn't do anything different other than summer school in Camp Read-a-Lot?
Right, and that, and the Jump Start.
But that's for K and 1, I'm talking about like-
Yes, yes, yes.
2 through 5?
Correct.
Are we, do we have plans to, Ms. Logan, do we have plans to add a grade level this summer? Or are we going to stick to K1?
We haven't gotten to that point yet, but just to give a quick background without belaboring the point, kindergarten, what happened is we've always done summer school 1st through 5th grade. And Donna Trick, our reading coordinator for elementary, she presented data to our principals. And so our principals asked, "Can we do summer school for kindergarten?" Because that was an area that we had a lot of students who were sliding. And so Ms. Parnell said, "We do have some money for that," but she really wanted to do something different. And because 1st grade doesn't really fit in with our 2nd through 5th grade summer school, I made the decision that 1st grade to move- school, I made the decision that first grade to move it with kindergarten, and so that we did those to get both together in July, instead of having the first graders come in June with the other.
We'll have the funding to do this again, Ms. Parnell?
Yes, sir.
How much did that cost us?
No, the, I know summer school is, yeah, the jumpstart part. And how we estimate.
So, is there a possibility that we could add second grade to that this year? Because, jumpstart was what, two weeks before school? Two extra weeks? So, is there, I mean, would that be feasible to, to bring back second grade early as we've done Kinder and First for that?
Let me, I want to take a, I want to answer that. And what I'm going to say is, this is like, this is just initial data. When we get beginning of the year and we're planning for summer school, that's when we'll know what the need is. I don't want to say, yes, we'll do second, when we say, hey, if there's a hiccup in first, right? And so, once we get that data, we'll make some informed decisions on who we need to have summer school regularly, who we need to do for jumpstart. So, I don't want to commit and say that, but I do want to say, yes, we'll make sure we address the needs of those kiddos at those different levels within those bands.
I wasn't asking for us to commit. I was wanting to know the possibility, if we can see that, that it is beneficial to bring the kids back a little bit early before school.
Absolutely.
Especially before we start a BOY.
Absolutely.
So, what I'm hearing Ms. Parnell say is, we do have funding for it, and as Dr. Spicer said, looking at the need, you know, and where we're sitting after that, based on data. Mr. Grant?
Just for clarity, when you say, uh, summer school for kindergarten, are you saying for students that have finished kindergarten, or students that are starting? So, first grade summer schools for students who have finished summer school need additional help?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you have anything? Mr. Ochoa?
I just had a quick question. Well, first, thanks. We met this afternoon, and you all cleared up a lot of confusion and cobwebs that were in my head. I did have a question, going back to what Jim said about all the third grade scores being so consistent across all campuses. That, to me, just seems strange, but again, I'm not that familiar with iReady. Do we, if we're looking at it on a district level, do we, do we, how do we come up with those numbers? I'm thinking the first, the original slides you sent.
And we're going to look at those in just a sec.
Okay, because if I'm looking just at third grade across campuses, they're not anywhere close to 487. That was my question.
Across these campuses?
At a campus level.
Here? Or when we get to the longitudinal data?
Yep.
Okay. Let's, let's head over there and see what we find out.
Okay.
Okay, so, here is the longitudinal data. Now, the reason you don't see anything on Renaissance over here is because these guys were in kindergarten or not even in school yet, so they did not take Renaissance. And so, they're in first grade, this is the first year that they've taken iReady. And so, you can see that that grade band there is 347 to 433, and they're at a, what is that? 373. So, they are, they are beginning first grade, just past the beginning of Kinder there. Now, when we head in, what, I'm going to come back to this slide, I'm going to, but I want to jump ahead so that you can see, and then I'll go backwards. What we did on these slides is, these are the same kids. And so, different data, so to answer your question, Mr. Ochoa, if students were not here in every single one of the, so think of snapshot, right? We wanted to track the students who were here and who received instruction with us over time, because a student could come in and take the test the last week of school and not have had any instruction with us. If our, if our Renaissance window was open, we would test them. So, the students represented in this data are students who were with us at every single testing point along the way. So, we're tracking the growth of kids who've been with us the whole time. So, in first grade, in 21, 22, you jump up, that's those same kids. In second grade, we jump up, the same kids in third grade, and now the students in fourth So, when you look at that, you see a positive trajectory heading up, you know, to where they are. Still, that, that third grade, you know, lower than what we want it to be. And then, we're starting second grade. What is that, four? Help me out. There you go, 485. So, a little bit past second grade. Now, I'll go back so you can see the rest, but I wanted you to see a full picture, and these guys have missing data, because they weren't in school. So, I'll just give you a moment on each one to kind of look. And the great, the, I think this is probably evident, but the title at the top is their current grade. Right now, these students are in fourth grade.
This is part of my question. If you go back one to third grade.
To third grade?
Yep.
Okay.
So, the iReady score is 458, but across elementaries, it's 487, right?
All the other graphs.
So, the students in this iReady amount are just students who were here from first grade all the way to now.
That's the cohorts.
That's the cohort, correct. Because we're looking longitudinally at the growth of a set group of students. The data that you saw in the first set of slides on, for this year's iReady scores, every student who is sitting in a seat in our district right now.
So, cohort form worse than people that just came?
In some instances. But what we wanted to show really was the step, you know, as we're kind of moving up.
You go to one that shows three in a row, three years in a row. So, if you look at first grade, there, to me, is 20% MAP 3.1, 2.5. Second grade, there's 70% MAP 7. Third grade, there's 2.4, 3.2. And that's a little bit troubling, because in a year, you're only gaining 80%. But if you look at first through third grade...
Can you go back?
You keep falling further and further behind, because you're never getting to the full 1.1% every year.
Right, right.
So, my question is, is there a place where you can get enough traction that instead of having 0.7, 0.8, 1.6, that you have a 1.2, a 1.4, approaching, you can keep doing 0.7, 0.8, you're falling apart.
Right. I mean, that's a great point. And I think, so as I said the last meeting, constantly reflecting and looking, we've changed some of the intervention plans for this year. So, looking at always, how can we strengthen? What are we seeing growth from? What are we not? What are principals telling us? You know, where do they feel like that they need additional support? So, always looking at what's being offered. One of the things we talked about today is also ensuring that things are implemented with fidelity. If things aren't implemented with fidelity, it's hard to monitor their effectiveness. So, that's another part of it. And then, I also think, you know, and the answer to what I'm getting ready to say is, who knows, because you don't know. But at the last board meeting, you talked about the big hairy problem that you all had to attack, and we spoke of that today. I think there, there are a lot of things wrapped up, and so, it's pinpointing which thing that you need to pull the lever on to move this. And many times, it's more than one thing. So, but yes, I mean, your, your point is correct.
Have any of the teachers pointed at one of those things, being our challenging lesson, lesson planning process? That it's just a lot, and it's a lot to keep up with. I mean, the thing that I've heard in my tour of schools three years ago, tour of teachers and visiting, the one thing that came up over and over and over was that our lesson planning process is far more complicated than it ought to be, and that it's far more complicated than other districts' processes are. Hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but that's what I heard over and over, and I've heard it this year.
So...
Have we touched that? It's one of our big hairy things?
Not as directly connected to this, but two things. One is, and I think we're going to talk about this at another, maybe, a board meeting or workshop, to actually look at those things so that you can see. But as we looked at some lesson plans, Dr. Spicer and I, and others, you could clearly see the gamut across the district of how different lesson plans look in terms of the amount of information or lack of information, you know? So, there's variance in that. So, there, we'll talk more about that when we talk about those things. But I do want to say this. I mean, because of the gains that we have to make, we do have to do things a little bit differently. I mean, if we're going to move the needle, I mean, we have to do some things a little bit differently, and we have to have high expectations. And, you know, what that looks like, maybe it looks different, I mean, we'll see. You guys will have an opportunity to see that. But we're unlike the districts around us. So, you know, we...
I, I think it's part of this myself, and I, I just want to speak for maybe folks that don't feel comfortable speaking, possibly, that it could possibly be the, a thing that is keeping teachers from being able to do that thing that they very much want to do, is overpreparing and spending time without the students doing work as opposed to with the students. And so, I just want to put a plug for that and say, I'd love for that to be one of those things...
That we look at.
As we consider significantly, because we are very different. We for sure are very different. And that, to me, means we have to have as much investment face-to-face with our kids as opposed to Sunday night, Monday night, Tuesday night, those kinds of things, so...
And one of the things I'll both speak to is, and I'll talk about this when I have my presentation next, but when I said I was going to make my entry plan, we talked about focus groups, right? And so, when I have my focus groups, that's me about four hours on every campus. That's me meeting with the principal and saying, hey, just so they know what I'm going to do, but I'm going to be meeting with teachers and parents from the campus. I'll be meeting with parents from the campus. I'll also be meeting with students from the campus. And when I have those meetings, and I've already started the principal meetings already, so I'm learning stuff, right? But when I have those meetings, there are specific questions that I'm asking, and when people are in the room together, so I'm making this up, say it's 10 teachers in a room, they're going to share the concerns, the things that are going well, and the things that they have concerns about, right? And so, that's me taking that in to see what we need to do to make those things better, right? So, I know we have, this is current data from the last previous years, right? And we know the goal, because my thing is, is we have to have exponential growth. You have to have a year-plus to get kiddos out of holes, especially if they are behind grade level. I understand that. I think you guys know that, and I think our team knows that. So, we know we have to do things a little bit different to make sure we make up that momentum for our kids, because we have them for a short window of time, and we want to make sure that they're successful when they do leave us. So, I hear you all, and I'm very passionate to make sure that we can do those things for our babies, because they deserve the best.
Dr. Cornblum? I was just, and when I'm looking at this data, first of all, I would do want to say, you know, taking a child into a month's growth on campus, that's still significant, because you're incorporating in this cohort, students who have reading disabilities. You're including all these learning disabilities, you're including just special circumstances that the kids bring. And so, I do think, as I look at this data, I am encouraged, and I think it is in part some of the programming that we had implemented, some of our teaching, I don't know what they're called, that the reading specialists do come in and pull kids...
Reading recovery?
Reading recovery, who do that. So, I, I am thankful that we're getting this type of growth, and I do agree, it does need to be, I think everyone wants more growth. Looking at this, you know, I noticed something that was really interesting, is a 20, in this fourth grade cohort, you've got the 21, 22 at 1.3. So, they are first grade, about beginning first grade. When they come in for the beginning of the year, they're 1.7. So, that makes me wonder, what is happening in this summertime that they don't see the significant summer slide? And then, when we go from second grade, the 22, 23, to this year, is that the less, correlation doesn't always equal causation, so I do know that. So, I think there's some deep questioning that has to occur. But I'm looking here, and they've remained kind of stagnant. Again, have not seen the summer slide. But then, when I look at this past year, when I don't think we really put very much into summer programming, because we're at the end of our Esser funds, I'm noticing we get the 3.2 to the second grade, which is typically the summer slide that we had typically seen most summers, kind of throughout our district. So, I would just ask the administration, again, correlation doesn't always equal causation, but summer slide is a really big deal, specifically for campuses and districts like ours. And so, could we kind of go to the drawing board, or the administration, go to the drawing board, and really wrap your heads and arms around this and say, okay, why are we getting this type of data? What happened in this 22, 23 summer that we did not see as significant of a slide? Because really, what we need our kids to do is that five-point gain in that summer, summer months. They could do that from 22, 23, and come in almost at a third grade, and if they could do the same thing coming into the fourth, I mean, we would be, we would be winning. So, I think, and we are winning. I don't want to discount the hard work. This is, this is hard work, and our teachers and administrators are doing a fantastic job. To see this type of growth is incredible, and our administration, I just want to say kudos. But, but also, let's look at that, that summer slide, because I don't notice a slide there, you know, from that 22 year, and then I don't, I see stagnation on 23, and then I see a fairly dramatic drop, and I know that...
Well, and also, too, I mean, we're, we're going to have to watch the data from the iReady data, because they measure things differently, first off. Renaissance is a screener, so it looks kind of up here and identifies the students who are in need of intervention. iReady is diagnostic, so it does that, but then it drills down to specific skills and diagnosis, like exactly what it is. And that's where that scale score comes from. So, earlier today, we were looking at some, and in the areas that iReady measures, you could see that informational text, for instance, was an area, because it specifically measures for that. And so, that was a problem area. So, it, it also is a different measure. So, watching how that number grows through this year will be interesting to see how much it goes up or not, but because it, it's new and it's different, right? And those are, that's a way of measuring that we haven't been looking at.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I would just say, you know, in, I don't want to discount the amazing work that our teachers have done. I mean, this is great work, really great work. But, you know, looking at, okay, those campuses, I think we have it kind of drilled down by campus, but just kind of doing that deep data dive and asking the deep questions, not just kind of stopping at the surface level, but, and I know you guys do that. I'm not saying that you don't. But I'm just, you know, as, this is something, obviously, that this board is really kind of honed in on and really wants to kind of keep an eye on. And, so, yeah, I would just, I would just ask, look at that data set, and then from that data set, start figure, asking more questions and kind of diving into those places.
Well, and I could tell you that, oh, here she is. I was going to talk about you. They're digging in and constantly digging in now, so she has them looking at data now, reviewing data that we reviewed with our folks in another setting. She wanted them to see the data and to listen to what, you know, listen, actually, like, what is the data telling you, and what is that telling us about what we need to be doing? Do you want to speak to all that?
I just want to say, because this is the third time, this has been brought up, and the first two times, I was antsy, because, I mean, when I saw the data in May, I was like, none of this felt good. Even though we know we're growing, it's not acceptable. So, back in May and June, when it came out, we dug into our numbers, we dug into elementary, middle school, high school, we dug into individual teachers, we dug into grades, and we saw a pattern. So, there were things that we already changed in June. We changed our elementary math intervention curriculum. We've implemented the iReady pathways. And we had every teacher in Waco ISD trained and paid them to come, just strategic recruiting training this summer. And then Elaine and Deborah are now going in and coaching those teachers. So, like, and again, we have ways to grow, and we continue need to dig into the data, but I don't want y'all to think that we didn't realize that things need to be changed, because it did, absolutely. And then, as far as the math, we're doing more iReady, which iReady is rigorous, and it's aligned to STAR. Renaissance was more general, that's why we switched it a year ago. So, we'll continue to look at data, but we absolutely know that wasn't acceptable, and we started making changes. And we started making changes back in June. So I just felt like y'all needed to know. Of course, would love to come on board meeting and dig more into show you exactly what we've done and explain more, but there have been changes made already. So I just felt like y'all.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Courtney, you or Dina, either one. So after January, when we do MOY, you guys will be able to, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys will be able to look at trends on holes that are in our curriculum or holes that broadly are, are showing up in our district. Is that correct?
So they, it does high-frequency vocabulary, informational texts, what else? Phonics, and so those domains. And so you can drill down and see.
But you can go through those domains and find out 60% of our fourth graders aren't regrouping properly for long division.
It will.
Will it give you that kind of data?
Yeah. Again, it's not that I don't think you haven't been doing data, but I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking, if we're seeing these trends in summer, and we're seeing growth over summer, and that's when we pushed in ESR funds, then I'm like, maybe we need to do some summer enrichment. Cheryl, plug your ears. That we can push some money towards, you know. I mean, these, these are the things that I'm thinking for our kids, opportunities, so we don't have that slide, so it's, so our teachers aren't always playing catch-up.
Yeah.
Every summer is, is, yeah. Well, and then on this data, it looks like we need to do our older grade. You know, so just, just, I guess, I'm, what I'm trying to say is, thank you for digging into the, into the data. Thank you for really seeing, we're seeing growth. And if there is a way that we can help teachers with helping push whatever, if you guys want to bring some type of summer enrichment or whatever, just, just know that this board is wanting every opportunity for our teachers and our students, just as you guys are. We, so this is a lockstep, a lockstep movement with you guys. And so I guess it's, yes. Thank you.
I had a question. So what is the turnaround, I guess, on like trying certain interventions, trying certain testing, seeing that it works, and deciding to do something different? What is the turn, is it every year? Is it each time they test? How often do we do that?
We've been consistent with our interventions. So at, so she, like, she was talking about just changing things up here recently. So pretty consistent along the way. And then as they started seeing trends, make it, you know, we made a change. But the data leads you in, in telling you that. And then also the feedback that you get from your campuses. But there was someone, I was going to say that, oh, when our kids go into intervention, we don't let them hop in and hop out. They have to stay in that intervention for at least a semester before even considering removing them, you know, to, to go back, because we want to be sure. Because they're working on different things along the way, and oftentimes, it's not just one thing. But they set goals in intervention, and they might achieve their fir- first goal, but then we need to start working on another goal. So as far as the kids staying, they stay for at least a semester before there's conversation about moving them out.
Okay, so like, by the time they take their middle-of-the-year assessment, we might change interventions because what they've been using.
We wouldn't change the program right now. We might change the, how we're intervening with that student. So maybe there's a student who's receiving tier-two interventions, but their need is now showing greater, and they need to be bumped up to tier-three intervention. So more frequency, longer duration, things like that. You know, the, the programs and the curriculum that we bought, that's kind of a thing that you implement. But you look at how you're implementing it, and specifically then what that student needs. And so how, you know, what is it, or what needs to be adjusted for, for them?
And then at the end of the year, I'm guessing we're looking at the interventions we're using to see if they've been effective, and if they haven't.
Correct. That's what Mrs. Parnell was talking about, yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm trying, so basically, at the end of every year, we look at what we're doing. And we've been changing. We just haven't like locked in on exactly what.
Yeah, mostly adding, you know, adding some things. We added decodable readers, some different things there in math. We changed some things. We had a program that now only our students who are most struggling are using, and then the other students who are receiving iReady, which she was talking about being directly aligned with STAR. So because, just because I'm struggling, I still have to see grade-level content. I still have to work at that level, because that's how, you know, where I'm going to be tested, where I'm going to be thinking, and where I'm expected to be. So we have to do both, but we sort of, you know, based on the needs that, you know, your need is significant, and so you may receive this program. But our need for this group of students, we're going to push you a little harder. And so we bought other pieces of iReady to be able to do that with those students. Okay, I switched the slide. I don't know if you noticed, if it's great.
Mr. Choa.
Yeah, again, thanks for meeting with us earlier. I just wanted to say, I know I can't imagine how difficult the job of a principal is, but hats off, I think you mentioned Hillcrest PDS and West Avenue, whose Renaissance scores were significantly higher than a lot of schools in the district. And I think you pointed out that it was those principals really taking advantage of the data that's available to them. So I hope we're doing everything we can to support those principals or train those principals wherever they need to see the same success that those, those schools have.
I really think it's, it's, you know, it's just really implementing what you have with fidelity and tracking it. I mean, when we implement things that are part of the program, we track it, we course correct, and continue that through the year, and that's what those campuses are doing. And so it's, it's not new and different. It's just implementing the things that are there to be implemented.
I feel like we deal with a lot of variables that are out of our control with our kids. But for, to me, all of our principals should be doing what's working, and it shouldn't be a choice. Just my, I, I, to me, it hurts my heart to think, oh, because your principal didn't do X, Y, and Z step, you missed out. So to me, I mean, our kids, we can't control what's going on at home. We can't control what's going on in the neighborhood. We can control what we're doing as a district in the classroom. So I, I will hope that all of our principals are using the tools that they have access to.
And I think, and it's not to say, these campuses, though, are doing it on steroids, if you want. I mean, they, every piece of everything, you know, they're, they're on it. And the way that they're monitoring, monitoring data is significant. I think you also have to consider as well, you know, some campuses start at a different point as well. And so that principal may have a bigger curve and, and different growth that they have to make. If I'm at, you know, South Waco right now is, is a struggling campus. And so that principal is phenomenal. She's a phenomenal principal, but she has, you know, she has a more significant jump that that campus has to make. So I think those variables have to be considered too. And I know all of our principals, obviously, are trying, and they're working very hard. And so I don't, just like last time, I don't want it to be, come across that it's not. But those two campuses, though, were just, you know, the way that they're doing the conversations that they're having, planning meetings, PLCs, and all of those are good, so. So this slide, any questions about fifth grade? Before I move to, I'm going to flip all this, it goes to eighth, and I'll take us to the end, and then we'll close it out. And there we go. Sixth. And that band's 496. The, that third grade that you're seeing there, that band is 496 to 541. And just for information, if fifth grade, if you were measuring that scale score of fifth grade, the fifth grade band is 566 to 597. So 597 would be the end of fifth grade headed into sixth. Because you, what's the, what did you say is up there, five what?
Oh, it says third grade. 524.
524, because when you, on your chart, when you go to sixth grade and track it over to 524, 524 is within 496 and 541, which measures up to third grade. That grade band connects to third grade, that scale score band.
That's what I don't understand.
So, so are we having, it could be the kind of correlation then between the two tests? Is a little bit, is just different?
It's a lot different, yes.
Okay. Yeah. So, sorry, forgive my ignorance. Is Renaissance, we have no Renaissance data on this, on this cohort for this year, EOI, beginning of the year?
Not this year, no. We, no, we didn't purchase Renaissance.
Okay.
Well, and if you look at the fifth grade, 23, 24, they had minimal growth in that cohort.
Seven months' growth.
Yeah, came in at 42 and ended at 49. Still behind at the end of the year.
That's, that's also, again, you look at that, and we're looking at 23, 24, 24, 25, we're looking at significant summer slide. So, yeah, I think that's where I'm just kind of like, okay.
And summer school, you know, once you get to middle school, is different as well. I mean, there are kids who are going, are students who haven't passed classes and who need to, or, or STAR or something along those lines. It's diff, it's different than our elementary summer school.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll jump to seventh right quick. And eighth.
Okay, are there any other questions?
And that would not be me, so let me go back to that slide.
Hey, Dr. Cornblum, thank you for your time today with Angela and me. I appreciate your patience with the questions that were asked, and I appreciate you changing, I know, I know that you had to come back and redo some data due to questions that we asked. And Renee, thank you for making sure that happened and.
Well, thank these guys over here. So.
Absolutely.
Miss Steele and Mrs. Parnell, it was a team effort.
The, as, as Ms. Quarterweg said, I, I believe that our board is honed in on, on especially, especially reading on grade level. And I said it earlier today, and, and I, I truly believe it. If our kids aren't reading on grade level, they're not going to pass the math test, because so much of the math tests are word problems. And I appreciate what Ms. Parnell said earlier about the pathways match, have similar rigor to STAR state assessment. I, I, I believe that our board is going to be looking very closely at, at reading scores for the rest of this year, and.
And keep in mind, this is, this is one piece of data. We have multiple sources of data that feed into the decisions we make as well. iReady will, at some point, give us a correlation to STAR as well. So it does that for us as well.
And we'll probably have that after MOY?
I think, yes, right.
Okay.
Yes.
But thank you, seriously, thank you for tolerating or explaining, dumbexplaining for me the data, and, and for being open and being flexible with our questionings. Truly appreciate that.
Thank you.
I just had one final comment, and only because you'll be better at finding this data than I ever would be. But, you know, when I was doing my ALT certification, they just keep preaching, borrow from another teacher, whatever, you know, borrow, if someone's doing it better, borrow that. I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able, if there's, if there's a district out there that has similar, whatever, whatever the demographics are we're looking at, similar to us, who's doing reading better, I don't see any reason why we couldn't pick a phone up and say, hey, what are you guys doing? You know, what works for you guys that we can borrow or steal, whatever. Every decision we make is for the benefit of our kids, so.
Well, and our principals are doing that across the district too, with each other.
Yeah, oh, good.
Yeah, I believe we've been asking for this information and, and this for years. But one thing, when you were answering, trustee Davis, you said that different schools fall in different, on different areas of the bell curve, but the approach shouldn't be different. You know, when you're talking about principals and things like that, the curriculums shouldn't be different. The approach shouldn't be different. Things should be streamlined across the district.
That's right.
We've talked about equity, and we talked about equality. We talked about all these things throughout the years in our district. It needs to be that way across the board. I think we've, we've all talked about it. We talked about it with Dr. Spicer. I know you're looking at that. Just want to make sure that when we talk about those bell curves and our students starting in different places, that the approach from the principal is, is still the same, that they're digging in, and it's rigorous and all those things.
Yeah, it, it is. It's just the, the factors, I think, that you work within, you know. If, if, for example, you have newer teachers, I'm just using this as an example. You know, we're learning our craft. If I'm a new teacher and I have students, and all campuses, we have this, but I have students and I have to grow. And I know that I wasn't a great, I won't even say a great teacher, but I wasn't even a good teacher until about my third year. And so, you know, you're perfecting your craft along the way. So there's a lot, but the, those campuses, I mean, I forget what, West Avenue has, what, 288-ish kids? You know, and you go to South Waco, they're a bit bigger, but, you know, they're, where their kids arrive to them, you know, sometimes the, the work, you know, is hard. And so, but their, the resources they have, the thing, the, the expectations, resources, programs are exactly the same. And in fact, what I would say to that is, if they needed something different, we would get them something, you know, something to help their campus if it needed to be different, because their students had a different need.
Well, thank you.
I, I do have one more question. So do we look at classrooms and the teachers that we're pairing kids with? So if I'm a struggling student, that you know I'm behind grade level, am I paired with a brand-new teacher who's never taught before? Or do we try to pair our veteran teachers with the, are, are we aligning to the bell curve?
I get you, yeah.
Or are we just saying, you know, it is what it is?
Right. So obviously, I can't answer that question for every student. Yeah, you know, you would have to go look, but I would say, yes, that's the goal. But I will also say, in some grade levels, you know, dependent upon who, who was hired because of the applicant pool, all of, you know, everyone might be right at the same place. I remember one year at Dean Highland, the whole third-grade team was new. So, you know, that, and that was, the applicant pool is smaller now. And, and, you know, we're having, you get your teachers and, and you, you're going to work with them, and you're going to grow them. But, but sometimes that choice isn't exactly there.
So do we have, do we consider moving, I guess, veteran teachers from other campuses? Like, if you have a campus that's doing well every year, and all third-grade teachers are veteran teachers, would we consider moving one to Dean Highland?
So I think that would be a district decision, because that's going to move some cheese. That's a great idea, and, and districts do it. But that would be a bigger discussion.
I think you'd upset a lot of teachers.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I get what you're saying. But, you know, if a teacher's happy, and she's, she's worked long enough, yeah, knows the kids, knows the families.
Yeah.
You know, that's a difficult move for her. And I think what you're saying makes perfect sense, but at the same time, you'd have to be very careful, because you wouldn't want to put all struggling kids in a veteran teachers class, because that's not fair to her either.
And to also answer.
And to also answer that to you, this is some coaching opportunities for our principals. Okay, so sometimes you will have to say, hey, at your campus, you know that you have these five teachers, you know they'll ensure students are successful, right? So there's some opportunity to say, hey, you know what, that Mr. Ochoa, he's kicking butt in ninth grade, Algebra I. You know what, that's a conversation. I need you there instead of AP Calculus, right? And so that's, we have opportunities as we go forward to talk to our principals about how to, you know, they have their staff. If everybody gets 50 teachers, right? You have your staff, but there's conversations, hey, you know what, I need you because I see your strength. And I get your point because sometimes that does happen. I've been here 20 years and I get this and I'm chilling, right? But there are opportunities where, you know, I know you chilling and I know you're great. I need you to shine with my ninth graders who are struggling Algebra I. So we do have some opportunities. Yes, it's some cheese moving sometimes, but at the end of the day, we know we have to do right by our kiddos, you know? And so we will have to make some hard decisions as we go forward. It's about student success, not always about, I'll say, adult happiness or contentment, right? So we will have to have some conversations. That doesn't mean every principal's going to go say and move all the cheese. That's not what I'm saying. But I'm saying we have opportunities to make sure we align some strong teachers with some kiddos who need help and maybe some newer teachers, we might move them somewhere else. So that's, again, it's possible coaching opportunities for our principals.
And we definitely have those conversations on campus when they're staffing, like where they're placing certain teachers, right? You know, if you have a struggling teacher, well, guess what? Their home base doesn't need to be kindergarten just because it's not a tested grade. And so, you know, we, we do have those conversations, different from what Trustee Davis is talking about, but yeah.
I would love to, to at least consider it. We're seeing, you know, the, we're seeing kids behind grade level over and over, year after year, so I would just not take anything off the table to try it. And I definitely understand, I know some teachers right now that are probably going to call me about making this comment tonight at the meeting.
Some or a lot of teachers.
Do you want to give out your phone number online right now?
They, they, I'm okay.
I appreciate your thought process though.
I'm just hoping that we're doing everything for the kids because the kids are number one. They're the most important.
I agree. That's great to hear.
I think kids are number one and I absolutely agree. I do think slow thinking, deep work, and I think that we've got lots of programs within our district like TIA, mentors, we've got amazing teachers. And this is what I've told Ochoa privately is, well, also publicly, everyone that I can tell, our teachers are some of the best teachers in this county, in the state, hands down, without a shadow of a doubt, the educational opportunities that are offered within Waco ISD, the teaching that happens is phenomenal, phenomenal. These, these teachers are, they're killing it in terms of education. I mean, there's, hands down, any other school in this city, I would say, Waco ISD, hands down, our teachers are the best.
Well, and our principals too. I've had principals tell me, after engaging in the PD that we engage in here and the different leadership development, they're not leaving, but I had a principal tell me, I feel like I could go anyplace and run circles around other people because of what I do here.
Yep. Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Cornblum, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we're going to move on to item number two, review discussed community engagement plan.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, President Quarterwig. One of the things, every month, I'm going to kind of come back to and kind of give you an update where we are in the entry plan and the community engagement plan. And so if you go to the next slide, you'll kind of just see some of the things that have happened so far. So all the campus visits, one-on-one meetings and attending just various events. And so if you go to the next slide for me, you'll just see some checkmarks of success and completion, if you will. So all the campus visits have been completed and I talked a little bit about that last month. But also one of the things I want to point out is I also visited the other facilities. Sometimes people just go to the campuses and just see teachers and students, but for me, it was also important to see the people who are behind the scenes that always don't get the credit, right? So we have transportation, maintenance, food services. So I took the time to meet them and just hang out and just learn people, not all the names, but just learn what people do and why we exist and just also to say thank you because it takes everybody to make our school go in full swing. I did have the opportunity to walk through some of our, all of our bond projects, what we have coming up for next year and some of the current practices we're working on with tennis and changes of that nature. By the numbers, I've finished week five, 32 buildings, 2 million square feet. So yes, I had my tennis shoes on today and I told one of the ladies, I was like, I forgot my heels. But I'm always just making sure I'm at campuses and in different departments, just seeing and meeting different people. And also I've been having one-on-ones with people inside of our district, but also inside the, outside of the community. And even today, I had the opportunity to go to Bader University and meet with the College of Education, some of their deans and professors and just different people who have, we have opportunities and partnerships with that particular organization. And so we have some more meetings coming up with McClellan County Community School, College as well, and then some other local business, business partners and foundations. Right now I am meeting with principals, I'm not done yet, but they're having their one-on-ones and what I'm hearing from them is that number one, they're thankful that they're getting their voices heard, but they're able to just share the things that they feel are going great and also give me feedback and suggestions on things that they, they think we could do differently. Meeting with community leaders and key partners and organizations and then just attending different things. As we move forward through the plan, I will have opportunities to, again, I talked about our focus groups, going to the campuses and spending that four-hour block of time speaking with those groups. And I think to me, that's one of the most important times within the entry process is because I can hear from collectives, whether they're student groups, faculty and staff groups, and also our parent stakeholder groups. One of the other things that has kind of been a theme, there's a question I ask almost everybody that says, what's going to make us the best district in the nation? And a couple of things that have come up, right? And one is, how do we make sure our branding goes forward? How do we make sure perception is about, we are that district? Everybody wants to replicate what we're doing. So that has come forward. Also, student behavior, how do we improve that? And how do you make sure everybody feels safe, seen and heard? And that everybody feels like this is a place where we're validating all the great work, but also the students who may need extra support, how we're helping them be successful and kind of getting them out there as well. And then also forming student advisory councils. So that's going to be happening, starting in January, to where I have opportunity to meet with our secondary students and again, having that committee to hear their voices and get feedback with them as well. So we have a lot to do after the, I'll say, the first month, but I'm ready for it and I'm excited about what I'm listening and learning and hearing. And so I will continue to report back and then we'll kind of talk about some action steps and next steps. So thank you for this opportunity.
That's great. Dr. Spicer, do you know when kind of the listening session is going to, or when you're expected to kind of wrap that up?
Yes, ma'am. Hopefully by the end of January, so this has been a month in November, we have a short month in December, so that's going to be kind of rough. So if I can pull it all off by the end of January, that's when I'll have my summation report. If not, we'll put it in February, but then I'll have a breakdown of everything that has transpired over the first like 100 days. But it's just kind of wonky with a Thanksgiving break next week and then Christmas break for two weeks.
Okay.
Quarterwig, I think you and I are like having ESP because I was just going to ask that question. When you do your focus groups?
Yes, sir.
Is that going to be with teachers first or are you going to do students? Are you, when, your focus groups, are you doing like grade level chairs or how are you picking the teachers on each campus to do that?
So what happened is, like sometimes, what I've done before is I'll let the principal say, hey, you give me a list of teachers that you want, teachers in pairs, so that's a group, right? So we'll come together on the numbers, so say the number's 10, five pairs, five teachers, right? I've done that as a group. And then we'll have students. And in that students, if it's high school, it'll be ninth through 12th grade, but they'll have a section of students. When I do elementary, I usually do third through fifth because they're older and a little bit more mature, not, you know, but they can kind of tell me stuff, you know, and they can articulate a little bit better. And then in middle school, again, six, seven, eight, so it'd be a mixture. I usually let the principals pick, they're not in the space, but they can say, hey, I need 10 parents to come meet with Dr. Spicer. And it's a collective, so it is a focused group. And so we talk and then they can, they do feed off of each other. And I just kind of take notes and listen, just like we did our one-on-ones, but it's just a group. So I'll have to do that for every campus though.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Dr. Spicer. Busy, busy, busy. Here we go. Moving on to item number nine, announcements, Ms. Cox.
Good evening, President Quarterwig, Dr. Spicer and trustees. Tomorrow is a student holiday, staff development day, leading us into our district's closure for Thanksgiving. I don't call it a break because we cram so much into all these days leading up to it that I think we're all just so exhausted by the time we get to those days that are not a break. It's just some day's not here. That break is Monday, November 25th through Friday, November 29th. When students and staff return from that, that week, we have just three weeks until the Christmas break. We were talking in our office that like, when we get back, it's already December. So that's, I think, hitting a lot of us when we start trying to counter out additional meetings and additional activities. And there's a chance on almost every night that you will be able to hear the special sounds of the season. You should have in front of you a list. This is just as we can compile right now. I'm sure it will change, I'm sure it will grow, I'm sure it will adjust. Wendy and her team, working with Mr. Carpenter and the campuses, will try to keep us up to date, highlighting all the incredible performances that we hope you all get to partake in. If memory serves, Trustee Ochoa challenged folks last year to see how many they could attend because we always know Mr. Vedanya is. So he hasn't given me a heads up if there's going to be another challenge, so. Yeah. So maybe we need to start like a selfie somewhere, if, you know, we can start collecting them somehow, but I'll leave that up to you. We'll keep you updated as the list change, just we'll make sure we send it to you. Thank you to our incredible fine arts staff, directors, campus leaders and everyone who make these events special. I know I still hang on to pictures of my daughter at different sorts of performances at that time and I think that we all will, even if they aren't our students. We'd love to look back at the pictures and images captured by our communications team. I'm grateful to Michael and Jessie and Quinta and Margarita and Stephanie and Wendy that get out and document all of these events. So thank you all. As Dr. Spicer mentioned, Thursday, December 5th will be our second attendance boundary meeting. Stay tuned for more information on that. We do also have information compiled separately from Board Book on our website. Michael and Wendy and our communications team got up a great webpage, so even those that aren't attending the meetings can still engage with all the content. We will be posting it separately there, so it is more of a narrative and more of a story about the attendance boundaries process, along with our necessary board postings and all the things that we are required to do. So be sure to check that out. It's linked on our homepage in the news section. And Thursday, December 12th is our December regularly scheduled meeting, so we'll see you every week when we get back. I hope you all have a very blessed Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Cox, appreciate that. Okay, yeah, just want to tell everyone, happy Thanksgiving. Hope you guys get lots of rest and refreshment. And if you are looking to get into the Christmas spirit, we've got a whole list of fun activities for you and your family to do. Board will now go into closed session at 7:43 pursuant of the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code 551, Section 071, 072 and 078. No action will be taken when we resume. Okay, and we are adjourned at 8:55. No action taken.